It's May 7, 2019. I'm hereby calling the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order, and would invite you, if you so choose, to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As usual, the first item on our agenda is public comment number one, and I have been notified that a member of the board has an announcement that he would like to make, and after that we'd be open for comments from other members of the public.
Linda, thank you. I'll be really, really brief. So let me just say that the last nine years, serving as a member of the Board of Supervisors, has been the most rewarding of my professional life, way beyond anything I ever expected. And didn't necessarily see this coming, but I'm announcing that I'm resigning from the board effective May 31. I've been offered an unbelievable opportunity to go lead the Iowa State University Research Park, and I'll begin that on June 1. And it was just too good to pass up. I'll miss working with you guys, and I'll really miss working with our unbelievable staff here in Story County. But I'm excited about the future, and just so appreciate all the work that everybody's done. But that's my announcement, so thank you.
Rick, thank you very much for all the service, all the years of service you've given to Story County, and the assistance and help that you have provided to me as I become a new supervisor. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Linda.
We'll be seeing you.
Absolutely. Largest taxpayer in Story County, by the way, is the Iowa State Research Park. There's my plug for my new job.
I was gonna say, and I wonder how he's gonna use that information in the future, but Rick, I wish you the best of...I don't even wanna say luck, because I know your capabilities, so it'll be more than luck, and looking for you to do good things, and I'm happy that you had a goal come true in this, because I know you look at it as quite a challenge.
Loris, thank you. Very kind.
Okay, moving on the agenda. Consideration of proclamation declaring May 2019...oh, I'm very sorry. Is there any other public comment? Excuse me. Okay. Now Carla, I'm sorry. Consideration of proclamation declaring May 19 as Mental Health Month. Carla Webb.
Good morning. I have a few words to share, and then, Linda, if you wanna read the proclamation, that would be great. May is Mental Health Month was started 70 years ago by Mental Health America to raise awareness about mental health conditions and the importance of good mental health for everyone. Statistics show one in five adults in the U.S. experience a mental illness in a year, and one in five youth between ages 13 through 18 experiences severe mental disorder during some time in their life. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illnesses are common and treatable. So much of what we do physically impacts us mentally. It's important to pay attention to both our physical health and our mental health, which can help us to achieve overall wellness and set us on a path to recovery. There are things we can do to help ourselves and each other, such as finding a reason to laugh, going for a walk with a friend, meditating, playing with a pet, or working from home once a week can go a long way in making us both physically and mentally healthy. The company of animals, whether as pets or service animals, can have a profound impact on a person's quality of life and ability to recover from illnesses. A pet can be a source of comfort and can help us to live mentally healthier lives, and whether you go to church, meditate daily, or simply find time to enjoy that cup of tea or coffee each morning while checking in with yourself, it can be important to connect with your spiritual side in order to find that mind-body connection. We want everyone to know that mental illnesses are real, and recovery is always a goal. Living a healthy lifestyle may not be easy, but can be achieved by gradually making small changes and building on those successes. Finding the balance between work and play, the ups and downs of life, physical health and mental health can help on the path towards focusing on mind and body. For more tips, I would encourage everyone to go to the Mental Health America website. Outside of the public meeting room here, I do have information regarding Central Iowa Community Services. This month, we'll be holding a mental health first aid class in Nevada on May 20, and we have five seats available yet, so there are registration forms out there. Out on the table also, you'll find our CICS Crisis Line, as well as the Veterans Crisis Line. The CICS line and the VA line are both available 24/7. If you call the CICS line, you will be connected to a counselor who can provide counseling over the phone, can also refer you to local resources, and can also connect you to the mobile crisis response team services that are available. That's all I have, Linda.
Carla, thank you. That was very informative and very inspiring, and I would encourage everybody to help themselves to the information that Carla's put on the table out here. That's wonderful. And now it's my pleasure to read the proclamation. Proclamation, Story County Mental Health Month, May 2019. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, and half of us will have a mental illness diagnosis at some point in our lives, whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times, and whereas engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illnesses as they reduce the burden of other chronic conditions, and whereas there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral risks and supports, specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being, whereas with effective treatment, all individuals with mental illness, even serious mental illnesses, can make progress toward recovery and lead full, productive lives and are real and prevalent in our nation, whereas jails and prisons have often become the default places of custodial care for even nonviolent people with mental illnesses. Whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2019 as Mental Health Month in Story County. We call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses at all stages. Signed, the 7th day of May 2019. Thank you, Carla, for bringing this to us.
Thanks, Carla. I move approval.
I second. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor? Sanders.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Next is a consideration of 2019 Story County Economic Development Week. Proclamation, Dustin Ingram. Are you here? Do you wanna say something about this?
Good morning.
Good morning. How's it going today? Hi, Dustin. So I won't take too much of your time up. I'll just say that a year ago, we made a similar splash here for Economic Development Week, and that we released a video, and we're gonna do that this week as well. And at that time, I think Dan and Brenda would both agree that, you know, we didn't anticipate the level or the extent of activity that we had for the past 12 months, and it's really touched all corners of Story County. That can't be done without the partnerships that we have throughout the county, partnerships that you're integral and playing a role in, and so thank you for your support, and thank you in advance for proclaiming. I think the proclamation will say the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read the proclamation. 2019 Economic Development Week Proclamation. Whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base, and whereas economic developers, excuse me, attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their communities, states, and regions, and whereas the creation of new opportunities for businesses and entrepreneurs is a key component to securing Story County's economic future for generations to come, and whereas Story County is committed to fostering a business climate that will attract employers, enable the county to grow, and remain competitive on a global scale, and generate new jobs and opportunities for our citizens, and whereas the Ames Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Commission, the Nevada Economic Development Council, the Story City Economic Development Corporation, the Huxley Economic Development Corporation, and the Story County Economic Development Group are committed to providing quality resources that boost economic growth and enhance quality of life throughout Story County, therefore we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2019, through May 11, 2019, as Economic Development Week in appreciation of all our partners in the economic development field, of what all our partners in the economic development field do to make Story County the vibrant and thriving community it is today. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll still move.
Yeah, and I'll second, and I would, so as I'm sure some of you can imagine, I'm feeling a little nostalgic today, and I just wanna say that in 2013, when this concept of trying to pull together Story County in total into, under one umbrella, when it came to economic development, those of us who worked on that, I think, had an idea that it could be beneficial, but we didn't really scratch the surface of how beneficial it could be. And as we sit here today, comparing where we were to where we are, Story County was really fragmented, and we had a lot of people pulling, a lot of people and entities pulling in different directions, competing against each other, and to the detriment of Story County as a total. And I just wanna say to Dan and his entire team, you have way surpassed any expectations that we had. I'm so thrilled. From corner to corner, border to border in Story County, there is one economic development professional organization representing everybody now, and it puts us all in a better position. And Dan, you and your staff have done a phenomenal job. Thank you so much.
And thank you. If it's okay, we'd like to get a photo as well. Is it okay?
A vote.
Okay. She moved.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, next, we're going...
Taking a picture.
Oh, taking a picture?
Sure. I'm gonna have to take pictures. I'm gonna have to take pictures. Thank you. You have to ask the little... Get some help. Come stand next to me.
I will.
This will all be over, all of our social media soon. Oh, stretch together.
Okay, all right. Laura, okay, to center myself.
All right, she will go with it.
Okay, you want the proclamation and the picture?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna take three with this, and three with Dustin's.
Okay.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Dustin, thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Next thing on the agenda is a report on the Iowa Games, which will be brief. We had a discussion last week, and it was regarding budgeting, and was that a line item in our agenda that was just automatic, or should we be looking at that annually? I followed up. I spoke with Kevin Burke, who is the Chief Operating Officer, or is of Iowa Sports Foundation, and with Chuck Long, and Mr. Burke evidently was the person with the history on this. He said that they used to come, make a presentation annually, and then a supervisor, a previous supervisor who's no longer on the board, had said, "Oh, well, don't do that. Just send an invoice." I said, "Well, that's, you know, that's okay. We're supportive of the Iowa Games. However, it's our..."I explained, "It was our process rather than the Iowa Games we're talking about." He said that they would be very willing to send us something, to come do a presentation every year. I said they could come do a presentation if they wanted to, but I thought we'd be fine with them just sending a written request for funds, and they said they were fine with that. So unless anybody else has any problem with it, I think we've kinda put that issue to rest.
I'm good with the issue of Iowa Games.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion then.
No.
Okay. Super. Let's move on then. Agency reports. We have Workforce and Economic Development Quarterly Report, Brenda Dreyer and Dustin Ingram.
We thought it was appropriate that we provide the Story County Board of Supervisors with their quarterly report actually on Economic Development Week, and so we're pleased to be here today to talk first and foremost about workforce, and then we're gonna, I'll turn it over to Dustin, who will then give you a report as it relates to the services we provide on behalf of the, via contract services to Communities Under 2000. So let's start with workforce. As you look at the end of 2018, Story County unemployment was 1.4%. It was down from 1.6 the end of year 2017, lowest in Iowa, and actually, over the past 12 months, really, we've been the lowest in the whole country. So if you jump on the Bureau of Labor Statistics for the federal government, you'll find that the Ames MSA continues to be the lowest unemployment in the country, so...
Which is all of Story County.
All of Story County, yes. It would be considered the Ames MSA. So over the past 12 months, we remain up. We ended the year up 600 jobs, and talks a little bit about a lot of that gain really being in the private sector, and certainly, we did a lot of work on economic development last year. We got a lot of new jobs in the pipeline. It's gonna be exciting to see that job growth over even 2018 as we move through 2019. In March, the unemployment was at 1.5%, and again, I always try to compare it to a year ago, and that, you know, down from 1.9 in 2018. We've talked a lot over the years, you know, that we've, you've been supportive of Labor Shed Study for the whole county. We continue to get updates on our wages from the Iowa Workforce Development, so we have new wage data for 2018 that we've got available on our site. I've provided that to Leanne. It's there for any one of our businesses that want to take a look at their wages, make sure they're in sync, and this will be the year that we actually do get an update to our Labor Shed Study. Last time it was updated was 2016. Kind of new is that the state of Iowa now is doing Labor Shed Studies. It's important to them that the whole state, while we've always updated Story Counties, that hasn't been the case across Iowa. So now they're being funded by the state of Iowa. They'll launch our Labor Shed Study in conjunction with our offices this summer, and it'll take almost a year to complete that. So we should have results almost a year from now in terms of what our current labor situation looks like. A report on the, on the Story County Job Board. Again, your support of our workforce efforts is so key. We ended the year with 107,000 searches on Work in Ames.com. When I pulled the numbers, the end of April, we were at 32,000 already, so continues to get a lot of traction. I'm very excited about the fact that 962 people have registered as job seekers. They want to work in Story County, and so the, the job board is dynamic. It matches with current job openings. We have 354 registered employers, and we'd love to see that number grow. Really is trying to get the word out that there is no cost to post on the board, and really, that's because of your support that we're able to provide this service across Story County. We do continue to sweep jobs from Indeed. I'd highlight the matching capabilities of registered job seekers against the jobs that are open, and again, it's a free service to any Story County employer. We've got a few new things that we're working on here for 2019, the first of which is a sponsorship and partnership with the Technology Association of Iowa. We have a growing need for jobs in the computer science, software engineering field. We have way more openings than what we're producing out of Iowa State. We have a need for experienced computer and software folks. So we aligned ourselves with the Technology Association. They're promoting our companies that have those types of opportunities. They're growing a database that we can market to at any time, the number of jobs that we have open. They added 500 names to their database, so they have a database of about 3,500 people with ties to Iowa that are working in information technology, software engineering, computer science. So it's really a key, a key group that we're trying to get the word out about our jobs. So actually, Thursday night, John Hall and I were up at a meetup event in the Twin Cities. There were 50 folks registered, and it went, the time went quick, and we had a lot of interest in our jobs and Ames, and I'm excited to hear that, you know, while there were 50 there, we'll continue to mark to those 50. I'd say we have four strong candidates that are talking with us now about exact opportunities we might have available for, for them and their families to come back to the area to actually take work. We are gonna be, we had a partnership in the fall and into the winter with DMAC and six of our Story County employers. We had 14 participants go through Workforce Training Academy to be upskilled to maintenance technicians, and so it was a pretty rigorous program. We will be graduating 14 participants from that program on May 13. And so this is something we see that we need to do a lot more of. I see a number of friends that we've been talking about the importance of really upskilling our workforce, giving them more skills, looking for partnerships so they can take some higher skilled opportunities and work 40 hours a week with employers willing to pay benefits. But this is a great example of how we can partner with our business community to increase, increase people's skill sets and fill hard-to-fill positions. We're wrapping up our spring community college job fairs. You can see all the locations we represented this year. We're marketing to the names we collected at each of those career fairs, highlighting the number of great opportunities we have in all different sorts of fields here in Story County. We've participated already in three virtual career fairs. We had a great experience in the Big 12 Virtual Career Fair. It's so nice to be able to talk to people that actually know and understand where we're located when you're talking with people at a wider audience than just here in Iowa. So we've already collected since the first of the year, 2,200 leads that we're marketing to on a regular basis, again, driving them to Work in Ames.com. Some other things that we have in the works, we are working with the Nevada School District to model an apprenticeship program with the high schools here in Story County, partnering with our companies that need welders, and we're projecting a launch of that program next summer. We're working on a programming portal where we can connect our schools, our schools in Story County with business opportunities, so if they wanna have a guest lecture, or they wanna get a tour, it'll be a place where we can make those connections between our schools and our, our businesses, clear down to our preschoolers in our preschool programs across the county. We're going to be working with a group of teachers in June in something called a Teaching for Workforce Academy. We're gonna be taking a group of teachers out to a number of businesses across the county so they understand the type of skill sets and the type of opportunities. That will be a four-credit opportunity for teachers, and registration opened this week, and we already have folks registered for that. So we're excited about trying to reach students via strong teachers in the county. Looking ahead to fall and Manufacturing Week, we're going to be doing a parent and student event, actually, at the new Cirrus and Alliant Energy Facility out at the Research Park. So we'll be actually the first event that's really scheduled for that space, and the goal would be is to have our manufacturers highlight the number of great opportunities they have available. Sometimes it's, it's getting the message to our parents that while we can appreciate a four-year education at one of our universities, there's a lot of great opportunities that don't require a bachelor's or graduate degree. So you'll be hearing more about that as we roll through and get closer to October 9. We still have three more career fairs here in the county. We partner with the Ames Library and Iowa Workforce Development. We've got one of those on June 5, another on August 7, and one on October 2. We run those from 10 until noon. At the library, we see about 50 to 75 active job seekers at those events. At the event we had in April, we had a Story City employer that had never attended one of our job fairs. They actually lined up three interviews during the two hours that they were there and hired two of the three. And so those sorts of job fairs are making a difference, and they're connecting people to jobs. And finally, I've got flyers available. We're, it's hard to believe that we're, time is upon us here again to talk about See Yourself in Ames. Remember, that's a countywide intern program. We've got a four, four-series event coming up. Little different this year, they're not all-night events. So we got some feedback from, from the interns is that not everybody likes to go to a night event, so we've got two lunch events. We're partnering with a couple other things that we're doing at the Chamber, but a little bit of different, different things with each of those four events. So we've got an event where we'll partner with our fuel group, the Young Professionals, here at the end of the month. We'll go out to the west side of Ames, and we'll have Jamie Pollard and Si join us for a message out there for an evening event out at the Sioux Cup Basketball Complex. We'll actually do, we'll invite them to be a part of our leadership event on July 16 at Prairie Moon. That'll be a lunch event. Talk to a dynamic speaker from Iowa State. That'll be our, our day about bringing your whole self to work, really about networking and, and putting your best foot forward as you start to enter the world of work. And then we're going to, on the final session, actually hear from two entrepreneurs in our community that not only are starting a business, but making an impact across the county. So we'll end at Campus Cycle and hear from Lindsay Fenley and Kelsey Carper, again, a lunch event. So I have some flyers that I'd love to share with you related to that. I'd welcome any workforce questions you might have before Dustin takes, takes over. No questions?
Just thank you for the work you're doing.
Yep. Again, thank you for your support. We really, it would be difficult to be able to do all the things that we're doing if it wasn't for your very generous support.
Thank you, Brenda. Dustin?
So we're in the midst of awards season right now, and I'd like to start out by talking about Prometheus Awards. Supervisor Olson can attest that we attended the Technology Association of Iowa's Prometheus Awards, so a pack group of basically the who's who in technology in Iowa, and Story County had pretty heavy representation there at that award ceremony. And so Story County as a whole was nominated for Community of the Year finalist. My knowledge, that's the only county that's ever been in that category for nomination. While we didn't receive that award, we still got that recognition, which is extremely exciting, and most of those other communities were in the Des Moines Metro, so it shows our competitiveness at a statewide level. Grosse Home Technologies also received Startup Technology Company of the Year Award. That's an ISU-born company that's actually gonna locate to Slater, Iowa for its offices, and they're gonna open a demonstration facility there. We'll talk a bit, a bit more about that in a second, but I thought I, you know, highlight that they received the Startup Technology Company of the Year Award. And then the big one was Ames Seed Council received the LWBJ Impact Award, which you're aware of, but Ron Hilebeck was able to, to walk on stage and accept that right along the time of his retirement, so it really fit nicely for that. As for downtown revitalization goes, the top picture there is photographed of the Upper Story and the Zering, the old bank building in Zering. That redevelopment's going as planned. This was over a month ago, actually, when I visited to tour that building, and so I'm sure they've made even more progress now, but you can see they, they basically gutted the whole place, and they're putting up some, some extra walls there, and the ceiling is done as well. And then there's another photograph below of a wall that they're working on, but that project's going as planned, and we're extremely excited to welcome new commercial business in the, in the bottom floor and housing in Upper Story when it's complete. Collins is also working on his downtown, as always. They've seen significant business development in their downtown, in their commercial district. One of those projects includes a grocery store concept. You'll hear more about this soon, but... You'll hear more about this soon, but to my knowledge, they're going to be submitting an application for urban renewal funds for this project. Now, that would be a cooperative model. It's a small space in their downtown, but they've seen through a vending facility in their downtown that there is a demand for basic goods, and they believe that they can sustain a grocery store, at least on a small scale, in their downtown for the residents of Collins. Again, on Grosham Technologies, we talked about Slater a bit. They're going to occupy a former vacant building in their downtown, which not only uses a space, but it just makes the downtown as a whole look a lot better. I have some big news for that in a second, but just know that that's on the way. The building has now been sold. They made an offer to Slater through City Council, and now they've acted on that. And then, finally, Cambridge Opera House redevelopment is proceeding. We're waiting a USDA announcement of about $360,000 to make that project happen. That stalled just a bit because of the government shutdown from several months ago, but I expect an announcement will come in the next couple of months. So, the big news. So, more awards. I attended the Rural Summit in Grinnell a few weeks ago, and $2.9 million in community catalyst funding was awarded to communities throughout the state. The big news, though, is that two of those communities out of the 29 are in Story County. And so, for the past two funding cycles, the only two funding cycles, Story County's actually received three of these catalyst awards. We're actually running out of Project X to apply for. So, it's great news. The first one there on the left, that's the building for Grosham Technologies downtown in Slater. This is interesting because it doesn't have an Upper Story to it. The state likes to work projects that have Upper Story housing and bottom-floor commercial, but because of the opportunity that Grosham presented to Slater, this made that application extremely competitive. So, we'll receive $100,000. And then, you can see the Cambridge Opera House, former Opera House redevelopment project there on the right, another $100,000 for that. That's going to be piecemeal, right? So, we're going to look at a ton of different funding sources to make it happen. It's an expensive project, but we've already received leads and prospects for these spaces, two commercial spaces on the bottom floor, and then three housing units in Upper Story. So, we're happy that Story County has, again, heavy representation there at the Rural Summit, and then we were able to get a couple photographs there receiving that big check for $200,000 in investment in our communities. Just highlights to go off of. Economic Development Week, thank you again for proclaiming that. 82% of Roland's residents also voted to approve the bond for the pool redevelopment. Now, as you may know, that pool is in almost complete disrepair, and if they don't act to repair the pool, they'll lose that amenity for the community that's attractive to families. And so, there's a group of folks in town spearheaded really by the mayor, putting together a group for the pool committee, but these people have been extremely aggressive and optimistic in terms of rallying support for that project. You may also anticipate that they'll come forward with an application for UR funds as well. Also, we're working on plans to promote housing and extending electricity and gas to uncertain industrial parcels. This is a long process, really started with the building codes, right? So, we reviewed those building codes, they're good to go, and now we're looking at site readiness for industrial and housing. Three parcels for housing, and then extending electricity and other infrastructure to existing parcels for industrial, just to make it more attractive for development. Right now, the corner, we talked about this last year, there was a question there, right, of whether or not that was even going to be open at this point. They did find an owner, or at least someone to run the facility in that hotel, or the motel. I believe that person's actually living in the motel. The restaurant's back open, so we are able to maintain that historic asset, which I think is incredibly important just to the culture of Colo. And then, the new Small Business Development Center Director, that's Dave Beidenbach. We drove him around the entire county to introduce him to basically all the towns with fewer than 2,000 people, so that we could connect that additional resource to those businesses in the small towns. You know, a lot of times, we're a conduit for resources and tools, right? So, if a business needs something that we're not able to provide, we like to be able to say that we have this other resource available to connect them to. And Dave is a wealth of knowledge, and has been very helpful on that front. Colo is evaluating its potential for housing development. Again, this is a long-term conversation, but it's something that we're working on, and we'd like to see housing development there and elsewhere. And then, also, communities are preparing to submit applications for UR funds. I'm here to help. I'll let, I'll keep you informed as I hear of projects that are in the hype. And so, I take any questions on that as well anytime, and it's my pleasure, actually, to help these communities with that. So, finally, one last thing here. Thank you for support, by the way. We're excited to offer today to an intern for an opportunity for community economic development work for someone at Iowa State University. So, just so you know, that intern will be working on projects that are related to county life, and that's happening today.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so, I need to say this. So, we have been so fortunate as we've gone through this. Drew Camp was absolutely the right guy to run our countywide outreach as we started the program. And then, Brenda, you came in and took it over and took it to the next level. And Dustin, you're doing exactly the same thing, taking it over for Brenda, and I'm so appreciative. And I just want to point out a couple things. I know we've got one resident of Cambridge, at least one resident of Cambridge sitting in the audience. Think about where some of these small towns were 10 years ago. Zering had more buildings boarded up than they had occupied. Collins had more buildings boarded up than occupied. Cambridge was a quaint little town that was probably most famous for just closing down the adult club that sat there on the corner. And now, these have all turned into vibrant, small towns where you go to the main street, and people are parked, and there's activity, and there's construction. And while it's a lot of people doing a lot of heavy lifting, I don't think it can be overstated, the importance of having professional assistance just to help guide them through the process of how they go about getting. I mean, I think what you stated about, of the two grant cycles, we've received, Story County towns have received three of the, I think you said 29 awarded. Nobody else is doing that, and one of the reasons nobody else is doing that is they don't have the kind of professional help that you guys are providing. So, again, I started with it, with the proclamation, and I'll end with it here. We're so fortunate to have what you guys are doing, and it is helping the people that want to do great things in Story County scratch the itch that they know they have, and they just couldn't figure out how to scratch it. You guys are helping with that, and thank you so much.
I'll jump on that praise and continue it. And there are a lot of different ways to measure success, but there's no question that for, we pay $85,000 a year for the AADC services, and another $40,000 now for workforce development. And we can see just from this report itself, let alone all the other things that have happened in the last few years, it's clear that we're getting a great return on our money. I at least think so. So, thank you for all of you. I know I'm a critic, and I will continue to be a critic and ask hard questions, but thank you for showing that this is viable and producing good results.
And I would concur with the comments that have been made, and thank you very much for the good work that you're doing. So, appreciate it. Moving on, Veteran Affairs quarter of the report, Brett McLean. And Brett, we do have your written report, and you've had a chance to look at it, so just anything you want to highlight, but you don't have to read through it all.
Yeah, I can give each one.
Is this the same one that was attached?
Might have. I've updated it a little.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Because this was for last. Okay. A long meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, man.
All right. Good morning. That's hard act of follow here, but I'm here to talk about my favorite subject, Veterans Story County. So, this is our quarterly report, which covers January through March 31st. Greetings from the Commission of Veterans Affairs. Patrick Pekin's our chair, Amy Rosenberg's secretary, and Russell Bauer is our member. Three veterans came in during the quarter for rent assistance. That total was $1,335, and that was our total for county assistance. During the third quarter, you might see second on your paper, during the third quarter, we interviewed 229 veterans and/or surviving spouses for eligibility for federal, state, and county VA benefits. The breakdown of that 229 interviews were 176 men and 53 women, 29 who were served during World War II, 37 during Korea, 71 Vietnam, 28 who served during the Persian Gulf War, 13 who served during the Cold War or peacetime, and 11 who served during, or served in Iraq or Afghanistan, OIF, OEF, or OND. And then, we had 40 surviving spouses of veterans that we interviewed. Started a new program November the 14th, Hometown Outreach Program, and kind of give you an up-to-date on that. January, February, and March, kind of did half-days at the beginning of tour number one, which has been completed. But following up the half-days, we did Gilbert, McCallsburg, Colo, ISU Vet Center, Kelly, Cambridge, and Maxwell. And to reflect back to Colo, we've seen 14 veterans in three and a half hours. I don't believe I've ever done that in the office, so it's really been paying off. Then, we started with full-day events. We've hit Nevada, Roland, and Zering. Total of 38 veterans and surviving spouses that we're seeing, you know, when we went out to those places. So, that program's really working. I've got three places I'm going yet this month for full-day events. Also, last fall, started working with Iowa State University Extension and Outreach on an event for our military community, active-duty veterans, retired military, family, and the community. That pretty much covers everybody. Tomorrow, May 8th, is our first Military Symposium. It's 8:30 to 4:30. It's at Iowa State in the Sun Room. We are a pilot program for Iowa. If things go well here, we plan on moving this program to other towns in Iowa. So, look forward to anybody that's registered for tomorrow at our event over there. That's all I have, Board. If you have any questions for me?
Questions?
Brett, about the event tomorrow, I had put it on my schedule, and now I've got a couple of meetings over here that, the way they're scheduled, I may only be able to get over there for maybe an hour. And I was just wondering, do I just tell them we have a booth there, or should I just go ahead and pay the fee to get in if I am able to make it tomorrow? I was a little unclear, because the poster says $10 admission.
Right. Yeah, registration was $10.
Okay. All right.
And if, yeah. You've already paid that.
So, then I'll just go that route if I'm able to make it over.
Yeah, okay.
Just wanted to ask. Okay.
You bet. Well, thanks for signing up.
Okay.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Karen Mosher, and I hear you're leaving us.
I am, unfortunately.
Okay. Carrie is reporting on the Emergency Residents Project.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carrie.
First, I'd like to thank you for all of your continued support of the Emergency Residents Project. As you can see in my annual report, we've been very, very busy, had a lot of changes in our programming over the last couple of years, and part of that is due to your continued support, so thank you. Biggest highlight, over the last year, we've implemented a coordinated entry system. What basically that means is that we're able to prioritize folks based on a set assessment tool that is used across the entire state. So, we're prioritizing people for the limited housing resources that we do have, instead of first-come, first-served, which is wonderful. That way, we are able to target people that are more chronically homeless, that have higher barriers to housing, the quote-unquote "harder-to-serve" populations, and making sure that they're getting access to those limited housing resources first and foremost, rather than you came to my door first, so I'm going to serve you, even if that program doesn't really match what your needs are. So, we're very excited about that. That system's been operational since August 2018. We have a wonderful partnership with YSS and Access to make this work, and we're working on continuing to increase the partners at the table, not only in Story County, but throughout our five-county region. We've also developed a new rapid rehousing program, which I spoke about last year. It is fully operational, and it's really assisted with helping us get especially single individuals out of our shelter and into housing, and their own housing, which is wonderful, while we provide some financial assistance and case management services to help them through that transition from experiencing homelessness into housing. With the addition of that program, we are able to switch our transitional housing program to serve the harder-to-serve families, which is a shift in focus for our agency historically. Therefore, we anticipate that we'll be serving families longer, since they will be families with higher barriers to self-sufficiency and accessing permanent housing. We may not, we're not sure, but I anticipate that we'll be serving them longer, therefore meaning that we'll be serving less number of families, but we'll be providing them with quality services and throughout their services to help them be more successful as they transition out. We continue to implement our shelter diversion programming. Basically, we do our best shelter diversion, we did our best shelter diversion when we were full, but when we had openings, we just said, "Yeah, sure, come on in." So, implementing those techniques with every call that comes in, we've seen a great increase in people that were able to successfully divert from shelter versus having to turn away because we're full. And therefore, in return, we're also, the few openings that we do have, are better able to prioritize those for people that don't have any other resources available to them. So, we're seeing success with that as well. The other thing that we've been doing that is not in the report is developing a street outreach program, so that we're going out to people that are experiencing literal homelessness, making connections to them in the places where they're at, rather than forcing them to come into shelter. So, I've already gone through a homeless outreach. Went out one night with Ames PD a couple weeks ago, planning on going out again this Wednesday night, connecting people to services, doing the assessment tool for coordinated entry. That way, we can work with getting them into housing without forcing them to come into shelter to gain access to those resources. So, seeing how we can get people connected despite whether or not they're able to come into shelter. I have the statistics there for you. We've been very busy providing over 7,000 nights of shelter so far this year, averaging about 25 people a night. With funds that we've received, both in Boone and Marshall Town, we were able to provide motel vouchers to folks in those communities, so that they're not having to relocate here, which is a wonderful benefit to folks in those communities. In Boone especially, since Boone is our second-highest referral county outside of Story County, it's been very, very beneficial to keep people in their home community without making them relocate here, and alleviating some of the pressure that we felt after Crawford Hall closed a couple years ago. As Linda mentioned, I unfortunately am leaving the organization. My husband and I are moving out of state at the beginning of June, so my last day will be May 31st. Our Board of Directors is actively working on identifying a new director, and as soon as that person is onboarded, I'm sure that introductions will be made and connections will be made with the new director. I've greatly appreciated the support over these last three years and getting to know all of you on the board supervisors, and thank you for everything that you've done. With that, I'll entertain any questions about the questions.
Yeah, so I would just say, for all of us, our goal ought to be, in all things, to leave it better than we find it, and you absolutely did that. We're really fortunate, and you're leaving ERP in as good a position as it can be in, and just appreciate the way you modernized things and thought through kind of the processes we were using. So, thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Also, yes, thank you for what you've done. I've also, in attending the Two River meetings, have been very impressed that all of the agencies, how the agencies have worked together to create this system, the referral system. And it's encouraging to know that that coordination is continuing, going to continue. You really did a great job of facilitating through on the beginning of this. So, as far as you know, Troy and Linda are staying?
Yes.
Okay, great. The two of your staff members.
Yes.
So, I look forward to continued success with what you've built, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Carrie, I have just a few comments as well, and I want to comment specifically on a couple of things in your report.
Yes.
The coordinated entry, the fact that you're doing assessments and determining both, you know, the severity of the need and the type of need is really, really important. And I think that's something we don't do often enough in human services. We say a homeless person is a homeless person, you know, whoever's, and the needs are so different. I'm also impressed with the rapid rehousing, because from the research I've seen in the past, the longer anybody's institutionalized, regardless of what their situation was when they came in, the longer they're institutionalized, the harder it is to get them back. they came in, the longer they're institutionalized, the harder it is to get them back into services. So that's good.
Very much so.
And I didn't know about the street outreach program, and that really kind of fits a lot with the things like mental health is doing with mobile crisis, going out and going out with law enforcement. I hope that, you know, and I think our law enforcement are excellent. I hope that's not an off-putting thing, if you know what I mean, if people want services.
So far, they, at least the one night that I went out, it worked very, very well. And the officers that I went out with have a very good rapport with the folks that they're coming into contact with. The folks that we, that at least we talk to very much know and appreciate what the law enforcement officers are trying to do, and know that they have their best intentions in mind, but also knowing that they can't be where they are. So what can we do to help get you out successfully? So it went very, very well, and I'm very excited to go out again on Wednesday night.
Good, and I imagine that it will go very well, because that's my experience as well with our law enforcement. They know the people who need the services, they deal with them frequently, and they know how to deal with them on an individualized basis, as you were doing.
Very much so.
So, best wishes for your future. Thank you so much for all the things you've done in this three short years.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Carrie McPartland with a report on the Salvation Army. Good morning.
Carrie, you're not resigning, are you?
No, but I have been warning over this.
There was a theme going here.
Yeah, no, not this time. Well, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm sorry I didn't follow directions and get this report sent out to you, but I'll begin by speaking about the two services that you do fund, the Emergency Disaster Services and Bill Payer Program. I got to tell you, we're thrilled to have Major Nathan and Major Michelle Harms, our core officers stationed here. Major Michelle is very experienced at disaster services. In fact, she just came back from a two-week deployment in the western side of the state, helping in Nebraska and Iowa with people who are surviving those floods over there. So a lot of the funds are going, all of the funds thus far are going to, really for training internally with volunteers and sort of beefing up our ability to serve Story County. She attends the Story County Coalition for Disaster Recovery Services meetings. I am the person who attends in her absence. So we're happy to work with those folks in making sure that if, in the event, something happens in the county, that we can be called upon to serve. The Bill Payer Program is an interesting program, where we actually work with older adults who need assistance, making sure they aren't taken advantage of with their finances. And so we have volunteers that we've recruited either from RSVP or the Volunteer Center, who are vetted very well, and who go in and make sure their bills are paid, things are, checkbooks are balanced, and that things are filed in order to try to keep some normalcy there for those individuals. We had worked with up to five people this year, but currently are working with four. Those volunteers spent 151 direct hours and 62 non-direct, which would be like making calls on their behalf, balancing checkbooks, doing reports for us. And so those folks are very dedicated to making sure that our older folks live in the least restrictive environment for as long as possible. I'd be remiss, though, if I didn't talk about the other three services, and I'll cover those very quickly. Homelessness prevention is something we've offered since we started in Story County. Through April, we have assisted 106 families. This is from July 1st of last year. And we've helped 106 families with renter utilities, and that's helped 292 people keep a roof over their head for at least another night. And of these families, 70 are brand-new to us. Brand-new means we've never seen them in our office, or we haven't assisted them for two years. And the vast majority of those are people we've never seen before. Our Representative Payee Program is very busy. We're serving 54 clients, 52 of those reside in the county. We have another 17 on a waiting list. We make sure that their social security funds, and some of us actually have us manage their work funds as well, that those are used for food, shelter, you know, things that they need to sustain living on a day-to-day basis. And we get a lot of referrals from the Social Security Administration. They seem to be referring the majority of the people directly to us. If we can't provide the service, we do have other avenues to refer them to and do that. We also have our Hunger Relief Program, and we have a food pantry and our Doing the Most Good Market. Our Doing the Most Good Market started a couple of years ago, when we began partnerships with Walmart, Fresh Time, and with Come and Go, and we recently added Two Fairways in Ames. We are very busy, it's growing very quickly, and it's not a positive thing, but I'm glad we're here to help. Since July 1st, we've served a total of 10,039 people. That's 1,467 separate visits to our food pantry, and that's 2,893 separate visits to the market. With the market, they're getting fresh produce, dairy, they're getting breads and other things that they, that cost more, but that they don't necessarily have access to. We've also been working with the food pantries in Cambridge, Colo, and Zering now for over two years, and we give them sandwiches, meat, produce, and other items that we have a little extra of. And that's really the working, we like to call it our reverse mobile food pantry. Instead of us going to them, they're stopping by once a week and picking those things up to take to the people who live in their communities, so that they don't have to drive to see us. And so that's been working out really well. And we've had to add refrigeration and freezer capacity, and we've had to add new racks to our market to hold all the new stuff that we're getting. We've got great partnerships with United Way, and they have helped us fund that capacity building. And we were written into a Mary Greeley Medical Center grant unbeknownst to us, that they received from Iowa Healthcare Collaboration, and they gave us $11,000 to purchase fresh produce, so we purchased shares from a CSA in Story County. So we're really excited about the things that we're able to offer. We can't do all of this without volunteers, so we partner with Volunteer Center of Story County and RSVP, and we have a lot of partners, some are in the room, a lot of them left. But we can't do it without that partnership, and we can't do it without the funds, so we want to thank you.
Excellent report. Questions?
No, I just want to say, she knows it's coming, because I attend the Hunger Collaboration also, and Carrie and her volunteers and her small staff are such an integral part of feeding people in need in this county. And the enthusiasm she brings to it, and the understanding she has of all the dynamics and factors involved are amazing. And I love watching Carrie work with Sarah now from United Way, and Shannon Bardol before, staff, about in the statistics and understanding how those translate into practical applications. So thank you for your work, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Carrie, thank you very much. Good to see you. Now, we do not have minutes for today from our April 30th meeting yet, so we'll move on to consideration of personnel actions. I would entertain a motion for approval of personnel actions as listed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We should just do it that way.
For those, yeah.
Okay, we all.
We're good.
We're good. Okay, next consent agenda. We're going to pull item 10.
Yes.
The reason we're going to pull that is, it is, the resolution is numbered 19.110 in your agenda, but it is really 19.111/111. It's a noxious weed notice, and I was advised that we should just pull it, renumber it, and vote on it separately. So is there a motion to consider the resolution renumbered 19?
Well, let's do the consent agenda first, if you don't mind, and then come back to that. So I would move the consent agenda with item 10 pulled.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then I would also move item 10 with the note that it's 19-111.
Second.
Okay, Sanders?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Just trying to fool you.
Keeping this fraction on our code.
Okay, then we will go on to public hearing items. We have no public hearing items. Then the next thing is additional items under 12, and the first one is a consideration of Resolution Number 19-106 urging the U.S. Congress to enact the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019. Dr. Irv Gloss, would you like to address us on this? Okay, thank you. We have a copy of the resolution, and it's fairly lengthy, so I think we can skip reading it, because it has been posted, if that's okay with you.
So you have copies of the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
So there's no need for me to read all those.
No, but maybe, no, you don't need to read it. Maybe a brief explanation of what the act accomplishes and why it's important.
Yeah, okay. This is simply a resolution to urge the United States Congress to enact the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act of 2019. I first heard about this concept of a fee and dividend when I read James Hansen's book, Storms of My Grandchildren. He proposed this in 2009. About two years after that, a group called the Citizens Climate Lobby began to attempt to implement it through legislation. It was slow getting through enough votes in Congress to enact, to get it on the floor of the House, which is where appropriations legislation starts. But finally, they did. And they now, this organization has really grown in their numbers of people that are interested in it, and it's been forwarded. Here's what the bill would do. It would drive down the carbon pollution and help bring climate change under control. It is effective, it would be good for people, it'd be good for the economy, and it would be revenue-neutral. In other words, it would not cause government to become bigger by turning the revenue over to the government. It would come to the people. What it does is to charge a fee. It's not called a tax, because it is not money that would be used by the government. Charge a fee at the source of the fossil fuel extraction, either the coal mine, the oil well, the refinery, or the ports of entry, if anything is being imported. It would also have a provision that exports of fossil fuels would not be taxed if the receiving end of that would have also a similar kind of concept, that is, a fee assessed on fossil fuels. And many countries are doing this now. It's estimated by the Regional Economic Model Incorporated, that's a private, nonprofit, nonpartisan organization, they estimate that 2.1 million jobs would be created in the first 10 years. And the biggest net job gains would be in healthcare, retail, and service organizations. It would estimate that 40% less carbon emissions over the next 12 years, and it would cause, if you want to look at it from the standpoint of how much this would increase our energy costs, they estimate that if a $10 fee is assessed in the charges, it would mean 11 cents per gallon of gasoline increase. Six cents a gallon, per therm of natural gas, and 0.9% of kilowatt-hours per kilowatt-hours generated by coal. So there's going to be an increase in energy, energy costs to the public, but they would be, they would gain if they got this dividend that would come back to them to offset those Farmers would be exempt from the fossil, anything that they would use in terms of gasoline and diesel. They'd be exempt from those costs. So Citizens Climate Lobby is attempting to get support for this bill from various sources, including local governments, and that's why I'm here to in favor of this. They have, on their website, have enumerated that more than 200 prominent individuals. They only put people who are prominent, so if I signed it, I would not be on there probably.
Don't kid yourself.
But anyway, more than 200 individuals have signed. There've been 67 businesses that have signed this resolution, 45 churches, 22 local governments, and 77 nonprofits, and 15 other organizations. So a total of about 426 names have now endorsed this resolution. So that's why I'm here to ask you to pass a resolution to support this bill.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I read the bill last night, so, and looked at some of those websites. So I'm confused about why people are saying that there's no money going to the government, whereas I read the bill, the fees are, that would go into the trust are net money that would go to the U.S. Border Patrol, and also there was another government agency to cover the costs of monitoring imports and exports, and then also to do the calculations related to how the refunds would come. So I can't get my mind about you guys saying no money's going to the government.
Right. Yeah, you would need some money to administer the collection of the fees and to administer the sending of the dividends out. But we have those agencies in place, and they're already doing some of that. Internal Revenue Service, for instance, already is in a position to administer the dividends, I think. And it's estimated that that cost would be about 2%. So you would, you know, the net revenue is what we're talking about, 100%.
I understand that, but you know me, Irv, so the minute I look at a bold statement, like no money goes to the government, when the bill clearly said, okay. So, and I went to like five or six different websites, and found that same statement over and over again, and found the same talking points, which made me think it's coming from the Citizens Climate Lobby. So I just want to point that out, that turned on my criticism, on my critique, okay? The next question I have is that the suppositions, it's based on the carrot rather than the stick philosophy, right? That rather than punish people, you're going to charge the fee, but in hopes that they will then create the savings themselves, reduce the carbon themselves, or so that it's not costing them as much. What, though, is the philosophy, the other part of it would be, is why don't they just raise rates? I'm questioning here kind of the philosophy behind it.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, it's a, it's a feeling that there would be, I would call them incentives.
Yeah, okay, incentives.
It urged people to be more conservative in their use of energy, their use of fossil fuels particularly, and therefore, they would realize more of a benefit from the dividend that they would get. that they would get. And so it's, it's, there's a lot of psychology here, and I think that that's the, you know, the way that they're trying to propose it.
Other questions?
Yeah, and I don't know how much questions I have. Let me start with this. I can't think of anybody I respect more than Irv Kloss. Irv and I don't, clearly don't agree on some issues, but you talk about somebody who, well, we talked earlier with Carrie, if you're talking about somebody who works diligently to leave it better than they find it, regardless of what it is, Irv Kloss is your man. If you talk about somebody who's willing to put their money where their mouth is, and when I say money, I don't, I mean money, and I mean time, and I mean energy and effort, this is your man. You're a role model to me. Again, even though we tend to disagree on our worldwide philosophical view, you're an absolute role model to me. And I have to go one step further and say, I absolutely believe that climate change is real and occurring. I absolutely believe that human activities are at least a major cause of the climate change that we're experiencing, and I believe wholly that we have to do something about it. That said, I disagree that this is the approach to you. It's not a worldwide answer. I think this is penal to any area that signs on to it economically. Loris, I think your questions are right on the money in this. I believe that we're going to solve this, and I do believe we're going to solve this, but I think we're going to do it through technology and innovation. I don't think it's going to be your generation or my generation that solves it. I think it's going to be the generation that's coming after us, and I think it is through their brain power and willingness to work together. But as much as I respect and appreciate Irv, I can't support this, and I just wanted you to know why.
Well, in answer to that, Rick, the, if you put this fee on to fossil fuels, it would be a huge incentive to the fossil fuel companies to become innovation, innovative in that technology that you're talking about. So it would be an incentive to them, and at the same time, would return dividends back to the people in order to offset that cost.
Sure. And Irv, I get the theory, and I understand where you're coming from. I just happen to disagree with it, and I don't trust, you know, I just, I have a distrust of government, and I'm not talking about just the U.S. government, I'm talking about government in general, for all of history, I have a distrust of government. I really don't trust some of the other governments that are energy producers around the world who frankly don't like us very much, and I view this as an opportunity for them as much as anything. But please don't take that I'm dismissive of the theories behind what you're suggesting. I just happen to disagree that that's the approach.
I'd like to throw in my two cents here, because I've let the O2 supervisors talk. I don't know whether this bill is perfect or not. However, I know I've been driving a lot in the last day on the road, and I've been listening to a lot of radio, and I hear that 1 million species are going to go extinct in the lifetime of some of the people living in this room. The U.N. has now weighed in on this, and they've said this is a dire problem. I personally am willing to vote in favor of this resolution, even if this is not perfect legislation, because we have to start somewhere, and I want to start with my support today, regardless of how the vote goes.
Yes, I am very, very concerned about the same things that Linda is concerned about, and I know Rick is concerned about also on this. So I asked my questions that I did, Irv, just to point out that I have some concerns about what's being presented. Now, here's what I like about the legislation that I read, is that in the event that there, that it's not working, the fee can go up. So it's very, it's tracking what the progress is, and that eventually it could go away. So it appears with the sunset. It's a long sunset, but it's a sunset. I agree with Linda about making a statement. It's not common for the Board of Supervisors to make a lot of statements, so we've already done a couple this year, and, but it hasn't been in the past. And I definitely think that climate change itself is one of the most serious ones that we need to make. I would prefer, in a perfect world, I would at least have preferred that the money did not go back to people, but went to innovation and technology, if we were going to charge a fee on that. But between the two choices here, and in the effort to send a message, I too will support the resolution. I will make the motion when it's appropriate.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt resolution 19-106.
I would so move that we adopt it.
I would second the motion. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Sanders?
Nope.
Merkin, aye. Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Dr. Kloss.
Thanks, Irv.
Thanks, Irv.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley, consideration of sending the FY19 budget amendment to publication. Morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Markley, what's going on? You have no idea how much I'm going to miss seeing your smiling face.
I can't even imagine how I'm going to get up every morning. I'm going to miss you two, Rick.
I appreciate that.
I would like to tell you that when I came here last time, last week, to amend this budget, I said we were done, but I lied. We were not done, because the next day, Rick and Linda come to my office and say, hey, guess what we need to do? Government never moves fast, except when I'm not expecting it to move fast. So what I am asking for is just an amendment to bring in the Storycom dollars that we're going to be responsible for and start paying for them yet this fiscal year. That's along with a few minor little things that came, trickled in also. That's basically what we want to do, is amend the budget one more time. The public meeting will be 5:28.
So primarily Storycom, getting some of the new infrastructure done. We approved, Storycom Board approved the contract with Harris Raycom, and they need to get started working because they've got a limited opportunity to do some of the work on the Iowa State University campus this summer. That necessitates some of the dollars going out yet in this fiscal year. Appreciate you being flexible enough to work with. It's money that we've already approved, receiving, now it's just a matter of how it's going to, how it's going to outflow.
And it was interesting, because I think the day that Raycom, or Storycom met was the day that we had the county attorney in our office talking about going ahead and going forward on the $3 million that you guys had already approved, and getting that bonded, getting the bond out on that, and the treasurer was involved. So we are moving forward on that. I thought, well, go ahead, amend it all then?
Any questions?
I'd move approval of the amendment going to publication.
Second.
Okay. Any just further discussion?
None.
Sanders?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
I'll try not to do any more to you here the rest of the fiscal year.
We promised nothing, really.
That's right, we promised nothing. Perfect.
Okay, now we're going to discuss charges, changes and additions to the audio system in the public meeting room, Barb Steinbeck, and Joel Harris. Hi, Joel.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
You'll find at your table a couple documents. I'm sorry, didn't receive the one until after the deadline on Monday. But we're at the point where we've been requested to make some changes, so I thought I would bring it to the board and get your input on it. A little history on the project, if you'll look at the black and white copy. So we started meeting with Marco back in January of 2018, and six meetings later, each time we fine tuned and added things. And we had, when we came to the board in October to get approval of our final product, we had budgeted $42,000 for the project, and with some of the updates, including that beautiful screen there, the final came to $49,000. And we decided at that time that the video portion of it, that would be that. So the video portion of it was an additional $10,000. We decided to move that off as a phase two project. Nope, that's not the one.
Do you want the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be this one right here. We decided to just put that off. So we're at the point now, it was installed several months ago, and we've made several changes. We took away the Revo wireless mics, we brought them back, we've tweaked the audio, and I hope you have noticed that it's a lot louder today. The system capability has been raised, and then there are additional controls over at Chris's desk to raise the microphone volume. So we're at the point now where we've been asked to bring an additional gooseneck in, and to do some enhancements on the video. So this, the microphone addition, the total would be about $2,500. Now, this could be less if, now, this is if a technician has to come onsite and add the additional microphone and the jacks in the back. If we do the work ourselves and do it via conference, it would be a lot less. So that's the worst-case scenario, is the $2,500. The microphone itself is like $230, so it's not an expensive thing, it's the installation that's expensive. So then if you go down to, then, so that's the one piece of it, is the additional microphone. So then we have the recording issues we've been encountering, where the audio on the video camera is not picking up, and they've had to paste it in. So the first option, if you can see it right there, so this would be just adding a wireless microphone. We've looked at options like running cable and putting additional speakers in, and the vendor felt that a wireless speaker over in that area would be the best, attached right to the camera.
And what's that cost? Yeah, is this, it goes over to page two, right, for the $11,000?
Yeah, it's this part. It's the two.
So this $11,000, just to be clear, this is the option you're saying that would put wireless into the camera? That seems expensive. I just want to make sure I understand what is being added.
I'll let Joel talk about it.
Thanks, Joel, okay.
Well, it looks like, and I just saw these documents this morning, it looks like this 2948 is what they're looking at to just get audio from the system over to the camcorder.
Right, right.
There's a couple of options on here as far as adding fixed cameras, and that's where your $11,000 right there comes from.
That would be cameras.
Yes.
Right, that's, yeah.
What's that, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, keep going, Joel. I was kind of responding.
And you said you worked with Marco, and this option right here would be a single camera that would turn and focus on the person speaking, to give you the option of having one camera versus two, so that whomever's doing the presentation, the camera would automatically turn, focus in, and record what's being said. That's in contrast to the first solution that was put forth with that, with had two cameras, one being fixed over here to capture this area in front of the board and the screen, and then one in the back of the room that would capture the board.
Okay.
And then the idea behind that was, is when you set up the meeting, you could say, I either want to capture the board, I want to capture what's being presented, or I would like to capture both side by side.
Joel, and I'm sorry, I've got lost, because I can't read the numbers. So as you were going, this option, that option, so, okay, so how it's presented to us on our sheet here, all right, which I believe is the same. So we've got a microphone add, which we already talked about, then option one, installed solution, that is $11,000, are two movable cameras with audio installed.
The $11,001 is the single camera that will turn and focus on whomever's speaking.
Single to turn, okay.
It has the PTZ capability, panoramic tilt, zoom built in with presets, so you can have it focus on the speaker, so whoever's talking, the camera would go to that person. Or you can preset it so it just shows the screen, and then the audio would pick up the person speaking.
Okay, one. And then option two, then?
That was option two. The cam.
My option two has a $2,900 one, that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, and that's how the Marco is, you're reading how the PDF has it, which is fine.
Well, that's all I have, Joel.
Yep, option two for the camcorder add-on is $2,900, and that's using the existing camera and taking the audio out of the system and getting it over to it.
This is the option I thought we were getting from the very beginning.
Okay.
All right, so, just thank you, just to clarify. All right, so then, what about, then on our back of our PDF, we've got a couple more Final page of our printout. It says, quote, summary one-time expenses.
And you're looking at the Microsoft, or sorry, the microphone add.
I think that's looking at the one single plus the one time.
It would be, so the top one, the microphone add, that's a separate project, that would be $2,500. So then if you look at the option one, installed solution, that's the camera with the panoramic zoom, and then option two would be just enhancement of our current video camera that's on the tripod.
Okay.
So there's three choices, you would choose either the microphone, or option one, or option two. Pick two of the three.
So, but if, just for me, back to option two, it appears back, it's the 2948.
Yep.
Which is just the camcorder to have the audio.
Right.
Which, like I said, is I thought we were getting all the way through this process. That, does it also have a one-time charge, or is this something we can do ourselves also?
That's a good question. Like I said, I just saw this this morning, I haven't talked to Marco. It would depend on where it ties into the system. We could ask them if it requires recalibration of the equipment in the cabinet, it probably would be Marco, just because we're not familiar with how to go in there and recalibrate the DSP. If it's just, you know, plug connector A into slot B, you know, plug this into the camcorders type of thing, then yes, we can probably handle that. But I'd want to get more information from Marco before I could give you a definitive yes, no on that.
I'd like that, to get more information. Also, I guess, because I sure would hate to have to pay $2,500 for them to come all the way back up to put this in, when that fee would have been included had they done the installation at the same time. But that, it's, we've done a great job, I think, of taking, since it was installed in January, taking the system as a whole, and doing those fine tunes, identifying where things had to be tweaked, okay? But this ends up being the major problem still left on the table. It's where we're getting the complaints about people from not being able to hear, and we know part of that is never going to get fixed, because it depends which particular technology device they're watching from and listening on. We know that. But, so this, to me, is the part that I personally feel is missing, as we had discussed back in January, or, I'm sorry, back was December, whenever we first.
Approved in October.
Approved in October, thank you. We had discussed that we're a long way from having someone to maneuver those one or two cameras, that having that technology would basically be unused in many situations, because we don't have a full-time audiovisual employee and are not anticipating having one for a long time. So that's where I stand on this.
But that's the beauty, Loris, if you go with the option where you have the camera that automatically turns itself to where, where things are coming from. I'm not going to be here for the decision on this. I agree that we need more information than we have right now in order to make a good decision. I would just encourage you this, and sadly, this is something that I've been talking about for nine years, and we never have quite gotten there. It is time for us to be moving to being able to broadcast these meetings live. There's enough interest, there's enough going on, that it's worth us figuring out how to let Irv Kloss come and give his presentation, and people who can't make it over here can pull it up and watch it, and we don't have that capability right now. So I would just encourage you, it looks to me like the $11,000 solution, which I think has almost $4,000 in Marco fees, which I view as at least negotiable, and do they have to do everything they're talking about doing, looks like the option that would allow us to start to think about. Looks like the option that would allow us to start to think about moving toward live broadcast. I hope you guys will consider all that as you go.
Thanks for your input.
So let me ask a question or two here. And I was not on board when this whole package was adopted, so I'm probably the person who knows the least about it. What are we talking about right now? How much money to spend and what do we get out of it?
Well, of the options that you've got available to you, like Rick said, there's a camera option that would replace the camcorder that sits in here, which is just a consumer camcorder, like you go to Best Buy and pick up.
Okay.
One of those camera options would be a camera that would sit in the room. It would focus on whomever is speaking. So the person that's actively speaking, it's going to automatically turn, focus and record them.
So that's for, that's $11,000?
That's the $11,000 option. When it was originally proposed, there was a proposal to have two cameras in the room, one in the back, one on this wall to capture the board area and to capture the screen area. When you sat down to set up your meeting to record, you'd have three options. You could pick one camera, the other camera, or you could pick a combination of both.
Okay.
And it's basically doing the same thing, except it's not turning to focus on whomever speaking.
And what do we use this for besides recording board meetings?
That camcorder? It can be used for the wellness meetings. It can be used for any county function that someone needs to check out a camcorder and record. So I know Veterans Affairs, I think, has used it before.
Do we need this fancy camera that moves around all the time to see whoever's speaking, to do those things?
If you eventually want to get to where Rick's talking about and you want to stream something, you're going to need a camera that ties into the system that will eventually be able to get to whatever appliance will stream that out onto the internet for interactive viewing.
Well, that has.
That's not that camera.
That has been some debate. It's not that camera, but there has been some ongoing discussion back and forth, I guess, about how much technology does it really take for us to be able to stream our meetings live? If we want the capability that in fact that AMES has, well, that includes a technician.
Sure.
However, there are some intermediates. And I've asked the question several times at the board table, why can't we Facebook or why can't we do this? And I've, I certainly would love to pursue this discussion further as far as our abilities to stream live. And I would, we could always bring that back, but for right now, we've got a technical problem in that the outreach staff or they are literally taking the audio that is being recorded by the clerk and having to then fit it into the video because that camera, it is not able to in a quick fix, plug into the speakers. Or, sorry, plug into the microphones.
How many people do we have watching these meetings?
Depends what's going on on the meetings. We can go as low as.
Do you track it? Do you know how many people watch, arrange, an average?
Depends on if it's the Loris and Rick Show or not.
Yeah, I know. Being a little lighthearted about it.
Leanne, do you have some?
It can vary anywhere. I think our highest was around 1,000 views. But, yeah, it does depend on the dialogue that occurs at the board's table. But anywhere from 20 to 30 views on a weekly basis. We've actually experienced a bump this year, over the past couple of years.
Okay.
So I guess that's a fundamental question for the board too. Because primarily this is used to feed our YouTube channel, is that the direction the board wishes to be.
And we also have audio. That's available on the website if somebody wants to go back and see what happened to the meeting or what. You know, so what is the, my question is how much the camera, which is quite a bit, you know, how much the video really adds?
What the video does add as an enhancement is we've been able over the past year or so to incorporate the presentations that are given to the staff or whomever into the video. We embed them in rights of video too, so you can go back, you can get a sense of not only what's being said, but what's being shared as well.
But they're the same presentations that are attached to the agenda and are always available because we leave the agendas up, correct?
Um, yes.
I'm just wondering. Okay.
And, I mean, there is a considerable amount of time in the development of the video. Obviously, that will still be in the video, so. Camera staff time should be something.
I support where I think the vision is down the road from a communication with our transparency and communication with a group of our citizens that are receiving their information via the internet. And so I'm supportive of that vision. It is always the balance. But I do feel we're providing a good transparency tool with providing video.
Yeah, we're providing great transparency after the fact.
After the fact.
What we're not providing is the ability for individuals who can't be here for whatever reason to follow something in real time. And if you draw the timeline out far enough, I don't know how far, but if you draw the timeline out far enough, we're going to get there. The question for you guys is, when are we going to get there and what are you going to be willing to commit to it to get us there?
Correct. And so I agree that a discussion about that with a new supervisor coming in would be the long-term decision on that. And it sounds like we're functioning, we're limping along now, so we certainly don't have to make a decision today, especially with, back to my request and I heard Rick state too, that I think we need some more information. It sounds like this Marco information came in very late, so turnaround down in IT wasn't even as much lead time.
Well, we were asked to put it on the agenda today. We did not have enough time. We just met with Marco last week and Joel's been on vacation a couple of days. Just a couple of things to think about, and I'm not sure what you're thinking today, but this money has not been budgeted for any improvements or additional enhancements to the system. And just keep in mind that anything we do with the cameras is only for what happens in this room. It's not for meetings that the video camera may travel to in other locations. And also Marco has a 60 to 90 daily lead time on their projects right now.
Barb, if you and Joel were to go back and we put this back with a new person sitting up here in the third seat. And you also went back and addressed my ongoing question one more time about what could we provide with streaming if we were doing live? Now, during this budget year, I believe that we approved a new iPhone for conservation and also they're purchasing a streaming service, and I believe it was $40 or $50 a month for them for unlimited streaming. And I still have that outgoing question, how can we, how can we do that for conservation and not seem to do it for the rest of the county? And I'd like to know, can we do something like that? So we can have streaming of a Board of Health meeting or, you know, that, yeah. So if you put those, sort of that out.
I'm not sure what vendor they're working with. One of the, one of the problems you run into live broadcasting, anything and things you'll see on TV, they aren't exactly live. They have like a three-minute delay, so they can cut out if somebody swears or sneezes or whatever. And that would involve then a dedicated technician to handle that and to be able to cut it as it's being recorded. I'm not sure what service conservation is using. We weren't consulted on that.
Okay, so I want to turn, I think, out to Alyssa here and ask, because conservation does have some autonomy on that. So Alyssa, is IT an area where they also have autonomy, per your understanding, to be able to have done that without consulting our IT? Because I like what they're doing. I will tell you, I like that they've done that. I hear what you're talking about, Barb. That is a big fear always.
Well, I think she would. They're not, my understanding is they're not using like the IT network or anything like that. They just got a cell phone service and they're just streaming it through an iPhone.
Yes, but we're paying for that. I mean, we allocated the money for that. So that's why I'm asking, at some point, where's the connection here between what they are doing and the fact that we are using the taxpayer dollars, general fund dollars to pay for it? So I'm asking, where's the connection so that we can explore where our connection would be if we wanted to do the same thing?
So if the Board of Supervisors wants to purchase an iPhone, have service and stream the meetings live, I think they can do. That's what conservation is doing.
In fact, I can stream you right live right now if you want me to. We have the ability to do it. It's a question of what we're going to put into it.
Correct. So the other thing I do want to bring up when we're looking at this, if you look at the option to go with the camcorder, my only question is, if that camcorder goes bad, is there another, are there more fees? Will that work with a different camcorder or is it specific to the one that we currently have? So I mean, if you're going to invest $2,900 to get the audio to the current camcorder, my only question is, if we replace that camcorder, will that wireless option still work with the new camcorder? Or are there additional, you know, tweaks and stuff that we're going to have to make? So, I mean, when you're looking at this, I would suggest we look at a solution that is going to last and we're not back here at the table in six months when that, if that camcorder goes bad.
Well, and that was where we started last year, or in the hopes that we would be looking at a solution that would last and that we would be able to add on to. So I know where my preference would be, but I'm one of three.
I think you need more information.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I think Joel and Barb, I'd say is.
I think there's some things to add too. When you're talking about streaming with a cell phone, the camera and microphone are built into the device. You're just taking what's there, like Rick said, of an iPad and you're feeding it out to a service on the internet. You're not taking this many microphones, projector and multiple angles to try to do that.
Correct.
When you increase that complexity, you can't just do it with a simple app service. You're going to have to have something that combines all that stuff together and then provides that as a feed out of the internet. So it's a heck of a lot more complex when you're talking about a room like this and it is just taking what's on your phone and streaming it out there.
Which is what, and we did talk about that complexity when we were meeting with the two vendors and asking for quotes, right?
But that's how they're able to easily do it with a phone. Because it's one camera, it's one microphone, all that built into the phone, they're just live streaming it right inside the device.
So possibly the discussion is short-term and long-term.
Right.
All right.
And as far as Alyssa's concerned, we would look at what they're going to hook into that camcorder. Our assumption is, is this going into, what's the microphone jack on there? That's a common jack. We would need to make sure that a replacement camcorder would have that. So going forward, it should be able to work with a different brand of camcorder without any issue. And another thing to add on, just because we've had some confusion on these discussions, the camera options that we're putting in here get you closer to streaming, but they do not provide streaming. You would need additional hardware and additional expense beyond that to get to that point. It does get you a step closer. It does get you the equipment you would need to stream eventually, but that's not part of either of these parts.
Okay. All right, thank you. More information, I guess I gave kind of my top priorities here. The top priority is to get us an option where the audio is going to a camcorder.
Could you feel like you have sufficient direction here?
Could you just tell me bullet points, what do you need more information on? So the audio option?
Well, as pointed out in what you've got here, it seems like one option is to fix our immediate problem. The $11,000 option is to fix our immediate problem plus offer opportunities in the future. But we want to know exactly from a streaming standpoint. And I guess the next question would be, if the next goal would be, could we stream meetings? And using better technology than an iPhone and an account, then what would that be? Which is, almost takes us right back around to where we started here, back when we started discussions.
So what's the next step then? Do you want a solution that just addresses that or do you want a branded proposal that includes the option for streaming?
My thought is we need to, we need to address the immediate problem because we do not know when a new full board would make the decision economically about taking that next step into the big streaming. So that's my prep, I think where we need to go first is let's fix the problem we thought we had fixed.
The immediate problem of the audio and video on the camcorder. Looking at these options then, and you just want more information as to how we could maybe reduce costs, is that what you're looking at?
That would be one of them, is do they have to come here? Is it going to cost us 29 plus another 25?
Joel, I think it's, from my perspective, it's simply you having a little bit of time with the, I know it was rushed getting it on this agenda. You having a little bit of time with these proposals, digging into what each one really means so that you can come back before the board and talk through, this is exactly what each one of these means. This is what we expect it's going to cost us. Then the board can make an informed decision. Today, it feels like you're just giving us, hey, this is the first proposal we got. We haven't had time to dig into it yet. I think the direction is dig into it.
As far as the microphone is concerned, we did dig into this this morning and I got them all to lower the professional services they were charging $3,400 coming from Minneapolis. And I told them my expectation was that we would be dealing with technicians from Des Moines. So they did reduce that by over $1,000. And they said they weren't sure how much more they could reduce it, depending on how much professional assistance we could offer. So that one, I think, is pretty set. There's not a lot we can do with that.
And that microphone is?
Just an additional gooseneck.
An additional gooseneck there.
Right. To replace the square wireless.
Yeah. So can we go ahead with that individually without addressing the rest of these items right now?
What happens if they have to come down then again or come up from Des Moines again for the other one, which the problem is with the video?
I don't think they're giving us a service breakup. I think they're treating each one as separate.
Right, but that would be a question I would have. If we have them come one time and do the whole thing, what's the real cost?
Right. Is the problem with that microphone, that's not something that's huge, right? I mean, it would be good to have it fixed, but we can live with what we've got right there?
I think the tweaking that they made with the system has improved it a lot. So perhaps that isn't quite as pressing as it was when we got the quote originally.
Right. It seems to me that we're also talking, and this is just me, the first time on this issue. I also hear, well, long range, we might want to do something different, which is a live broadcast. I have some pause in putting very much money into a solution with cameras right now when we may be doing something different on down the road. I don't see a huge, personally, I don't see huge benefit for us for having the supervisor meetings video, you know, going out on videotape. I know transparency, but I also hear not many people looking at it. And I know sometimes the people who are looking at the videotapes are me, another supervisor or staff person, you know, trying to figure out something that happened in a meeting and we want more detail maybe than in the minutes. And the minutes are fine for most things, but sometimes somebody wants to go back and hear a comment or hear some detail. We have an audio. I'm at this point saying, I don't, I would like to see more of where we might go in the future and what that looks like before we spend, you know, too terribly much money on getting, you know. And I personally would find with taking the video down rather than having a lot of staff time working on it right now.
And that's, that, yeah.
It's my first time to comment on it, so I wanted to get, wanted to get that out there.
So hearing maybe a preference, going back to our conversations when we got into this and we were discussing last year in meeting with, and we had put forth all of our wishes. And that's kind of where we came up with the $49,000 start, correct, Joel? All right. So I think I may have heard Linda ask for an update or maybe just some better understanding of where we were at that $49,000 quote. Where the two vendors came in, because that was the technology base that we had kind of set for them. So that going forward, would you like that in a, maybe they could come back and give a presentation for us to bring up to date?
I'm willing to meet with staff individually for my own personal information on this, to get me up to speed and looking at it. I'm willing to take time and, you know, rather than doing a board meeting unless somebody else wants that, I'm willing to just meet with Barb and her staff and get my questions answered.
That would be great.
Want to do that?
Welcome that opportunity. Welcome that opportunity.
Okay, so we, can we just stay where we are for now, and not spend any additional taxpayer monies unless they're absolutely necessary for functionality at this point? I'm a little concerned about Leanne spending all this time to have to sync up the video and the audio. How long's that taken you?
Six hours.
More than you'd like to think about, right? And I know you're behind on a lot of other things that are very essential right now because of this, and I don't like, I don't like.
So I have not.
Let's let Leanne get to the mic.
About a couple months, Matt has been doing the video.
Okay.
Today and tomorrow is me doing the video, I have not spent, I have not had full audio, so I can't really tell you how much time it's taken me. It's not, I think I can do it in a more inordinate amount of time, but I have, he gave me very clear procedures to follow, so.
Okay.
It will take some time to render the video today, so.
And I'm wondering, with the audio improvements, maybe you won't have to do that today.
Yeah, we might be able to.
Yeah, just listen to it and see.
That'd be great.
That would be fantastic.
So, the problem maybe solved, we just don't know?
Yeah.
Correct. We haven't listened to it.
Okay. Well, let's see if the problem's solved then, before we create some other ones, I guess. Is everybody okay with that? I'll find some time this next week to come down to IT and get myself right up to speed.
I'm okay for this, except for, I still would like staff to look into what we've mentioned, and that, about the different prices, and you'll go down and educate yourself. So, I have not given up on the idea about a new board, I guess, asking for a third board member to discuss where they might want to see technology go in the future. So, yeah, so I would still ask that staff answer those questions. Whether they need to bring them back to the board will depend on when we get a new board member, I guess.
Yeah, so you've got, so you've got some time to let this settle in for yourselves, and maybe suggest some more direction to us, because you know how other staff are using this system also.
Or want to use.
Or might, or might have some good uses for it. So I'm looking towards you folks to do some more analysis for us, rather than us doing the analysis up here as the decision makers. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yes, we can find a solution that meets your expectations, that would be great.
Thanks. Anything else?
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Amelia Shonerman with a resolution for Robinson subdivision agricultural.
And I'm going to go now, so I'm not dissing Amelia. Thank you.
Amelia, what do you have for us today?
Okay, so this is an agricultural subdivision. And it's, the purpose is to execute an estate, and it's located outside of Colo, in Albany Township. So it's two, in yellow, basically quarter quarters, except one has been previously divided, and so it's due further divisions and subdivisions now required. And so this is what the subdivision will look like, instead of being divided east to west, it's now proposing to divide north to south, so that the person that owns the parcel that was previously divided, parcel B, will inherit the east half, and the other person will inherit the west half, and that will be equitable, and then both will also have row crop production, rather than having one landlot in the current configuration. So yeah, they're basically just being reconfigured, and they will use this existing access on lot one. These aren't developed lots, they're as subdivision lots, we're encouraging them to have access easement, but it's not required. They're currently in row crop production, this is all from the aerial photo, and they will remain in row crop production, which is in line with our future use designation of agricultural conservation in the area. All surrounding properties, but the single-family dwelling to the south, which again is occupied by the future owner of lot two, are in agricultural operations. Well, we are only a half mile from the city of Colo, and so within a half mile, there are a couple parcels owned by the city of Colo, inside the city's boundaries, but otherwise there are, you know, 54 parcels and only seven contained dwellings. So it is predominantly an agricultural area. Here are the requirements for an agricultural subdivision plan, going through those few questions. We routed this on April 2nd for review, county engineers noticed if they didn't need to do a new driveway, again, they plan to share a new driveway. They require a permit, we had just questions to ensure the future use was for agriculture, and we sent those out to property owners, we've been a quarter mile on April 30th. The city of Colo also took action last night, that's the city we've been two miles, and I checked this morning, and they did approve.
Okay.
So with that, again, the goal is just to divide two agricultural parcels, which will be continued to be used for agricultural purposes, to execute an estate and ensure equitable sized parcels in that division. There aren't additional divisions permitted in an agricultural subdivision plan unless the entire subdivision is considered for planning purposes. All requirements for an agricultural subdivision are met, and they will be sharing an access. So we recommend alternative one, approval of resolution 19 dash 110 for the agricultural subdivision, Platt Robinson subdivision. If you have any questions, we'll get into those.
Questions?
None. Looks, once again, another straightforward subdivision here. I would move approval of resolution 19-110, the agricultural subdivision, Platt Robinson subdivision, as put forth in SUB 05-19.
I second the motion. Any discussion?
None.
If not, Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And, now we are to discussion and consideration of appointments to the Commission of Veterans Affairs as follows. An unexpired term ending June 30th, '20, Ally Wilcox, and a three-year term ending June 30, '22, Nick Prossino. And interviews were held, I believe we had six interviews, we had seven applicants, and one withdrew, and those are the people that I thought would bring the most to this, and they're, I think their information was attached to the agenda, so I would entertain a motion for appointing them to the VA Commission.
I would move as presented.
Okay, second, discussion?
None.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
They're appointed. And I did just yesterday receive a resignation from one other person who's on the Veterans Affairs Commission, but we will need to post that position and interview.
We will.
Yes. Yes, Kate Gregory has decided that she will not be able to serve, so her, the position she was going to take will be posted.
Are we going to be able then, is she resigning immediately? Yes, backing up is.
Yes.
Okay. So will we be able to appoint Ally and Nick right away? And timely entry? Okay?
Good morning, and I apologize, I was just out in the hallway there. We can proceed with appointing the two individuals that are on the agenda today, or for those vacancies. I talked with Ethan Anderson this morning, and he is recommending, since the vacant, since the appointment that Kate currently has and is resigning from wasn't part of the posting with these positions, that we would have to post that one separately and go through the process. And from a timing perspective, when I reach out to those individuals who we interviewed, I can let them know, we have another opening, and if they are interested in pursuing that, then we'll just pull their applications and keep those in the application pool.
Great, thanks. But as far as filling, okay, but can these two, Ally and Nick, or one of them be appointed early, was my question?
So, Ally's appointment is an unexpired term that has one year left, and so she, her appointment would be effective immediately.
Okay.
Nick's is an appointment that would start July 1st, because it would be replacing an individual who is not seeking another term.
Yeah, thank you. Cool.
Okay. And we did take a vote, didn't we? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Next, discussion and consideration of application to the Story County Housing Trust Fund for FY 2019, notice of funding availability. Leanne?
Good afternoon.
Hello. Yes, definitely, good afternoon.
This item before you is a response to notice of funding availability through the Story County Housing Trust Fund. Story County, even though we are one of the funders to the Housing Trust Fund, may also be an applicant through the process. They have released the NOFA for rental assistance, its total amount of funding is about $114,000. Grant funds may be used for rent, utilities, deposits, and application fees. What we are proposing is a program to enhance our Homebase Iowa program. It would be for rental assistance and rental application fees, again, complimentary to the Homebase Iowa program. Eligible applicants would qualify up to $2,000 for assistance. These applicants, however, would be required to meet, would have to meet income eligibility requirements. So again, it's an enhancement to our Homebase Iowa program, and attempting to reach a, possibly reach out to different, different audience than we've been able to with our current program. What else do I want to say? The proposal does include for up to eight households, so four in year one, and four in year two, it's a two-year program. It does not in any way replace the program that Veterans Affairs does for rental assistance. It's again tied to our Homebase Iowa program. I will be bringing forward changes May 21st to the Homebase Iowa program, adding employment requirement back in, and so one of the appendices to the application for the NOFA does indicate some draft changes to our program, too. I just want you to be aware of that. We're asking for a total of $27,600, sorry, $17,600, $16,000 for those eight applications, and then we are able to request administration costs, so $1,600 for that. Do you have any questions?
I do. And as we talked about this, there was a meeting between Deb Schildroth, Leanne, myself, and Brenda Dreyer, as we worked through this, and now that I see the numbers filled out on the application, going to item number four, okay, we're asking for 16,7 from the Story County Housing Trust Fund, and then 10, we have 10,000 from us, but it says, is it committed? So where's, is this the same $10,000 that we voted to give to the Story County Housing Trust Fund?
No, this is the amount that Story County programs annually in your budget for the Homebase Iowa program.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, now the way, though, that this will work, we perceive this working, is if someone comes and applies for rent assistance, and they are above the threshold to be able to use $2,000 of the trust fund money, then that will come out of the $10,000 that we've already budgeted. So somebody could come in and get up to $2,500 from us, and it would all come out of the trust fund if their income is higher.
Only up to 2,000 out of the trust fund.
Up to the 2,000 of the trust fund.
And then the additional 500 may come out of the 10,000 that's been committed by Story County, the additional 500.
If they're below.
If they're below, right.
I'm talking about above.
Oh, if they're above, yeah.
I want to point out that that $10,000 that we budgeted out of general fund money, some of it will be used at 500, up to $500 a pop, if their income's below the threshold. But if their income is above the threshold, the entire, up to 2,500, comes from us. So we don't know how many families or veterans, because this is really a veteran moving into the county to take a job, we don't know how many people we actually will serve with that 10,000. If it's eight, if it's four people come dashing in the door right away, who are all doing rental, and they have come from the military, so they haven't had, their income's been rather restricted, and they're going to a particular job where their income is going to be restricted, like maybe they're getting into nursing, CNA, or something like that, then that money will come, 2,000 from the trust fund, and 500 from us. But, and we could do many of them, but if these, all the people who come for rental, then now asking for rental, if they're all coming in and they're going to be making above the threshold for the Story County Trust Fund, the entire, up to 2,500, could come out of our $10,000 expenditure. So we could end up doing as little as four, and we could end up doing many, eight, in one year.
Possibly, right.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? It's on your agenda today, because the deadline is actually tomorrow, so I would like to have approval today, and then have Supervisor Merkin sign it, and I'll get you a clean copy to sign, unless, you might have one, pending approval today.
I didn't get that far yet, I, we'll, we'll check right afterwards to see if I made a clean copy. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve our application into this program.
I would second that, is there any further discussion?
I would just like to note that this, the Homebase Iowa program had been asked about the ability to help veterans who would be renting when they were moving, and this fills that gap, and allows us possibly to maximize our money here for, for people within a certain income range. So that's my statement.
Okay. Just one question, and this is, on one part of this report, I see a $16,700 for Story County Housing Trust, and another place I see a $17,600. Is there a reason for?
No, that's a good catch. Number four should be 17-6.
It should be.
It should be. When, when Loris was questioning that, I was looking at that, it's 17-6.
I can even add one?
So I do need to print a new copy.
Okay, would you?
So, item number four.
And then, where, okay. So, your motion, you're understanding that?
My motion includes the 17-6 consecutively.
Okay. Anything else?
None.
Okay, Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thanks.
And then you'll bring me something, and I'll sign it in a little bit. Thank you very much, Leanne, for your work on this. Department reports, Carla, Community Service.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon now, yes.
So this is our Community Services Quarterly Report, covering the period of January 2019 to March 2019. Do you want me to go through the numbers?
I've had an opportunity to look at it.
I've looked at it also.
Okay.
So, we're good?
Yeah.
Good there, okay. So as far as activity for the CICS region, we did submit our annual service and budget plan for FY '20 to the state, that was due on April 1st, and you can find that plan on the CICS website, if you'd like to take a look at that. It's outlining our, our planning efforts, basically, for FY '20, and our, what we anticipate for expenses. As you had on your agenda today, the fiscal agent agreement with CICS to begin 7-1, we did have Madison County withdrew as of 6:30 as our fiscal agent, so we're happy that Story County is willing to serve in that manner. Story County was the only county that expressed interest in our region to do that, so we're very grateful to our Auditor and Treasurers Office for that. We've held two community meetings, and with providers, law enforcement, and other interested individuals, to have some initial conversations regarding two new core services for adults that we need to develop in our region, that is, an access center, and then intensive residential service homes. Through the conversations that we had with those that attended the meetings, there was interest in looking at an access center network concept, so rather than setting up bricks and mortar type access center, where the services that are required to be available are all provided in one location, we're looking at the, an option of having a lead agency who would option of having a lead agency who would coordinate those services that make up the access center. Those services are crisis stabilization, which we have available in our region through Mary Greeley Medical Center, substance use services, and then subacute services. Though, one service we don't have available right now is subacute, so we would need to be looking at development of that as well for our region. So we're exploring those concepts a little bit further. We're just in the initial planning stages, I would say, right now for both of those There was some big movement in legislation this session for us. The governor did sign into law the Children's Mental Health Bill, as well as another bill that changes the ending fund balance that regions can have up to 40%, and it gives us a couple more years to spend down our, our fund balances. So we'll be getting to, we're wait, we need to wait for rules to come out on the children's mental health services. We anticipate those coming out by January, and then we'll be working on, we'll need to do an annual service and budget plan that'll be due in April of next year to include the children's services.
Just amazed that it's going to take that long to get the rules, then we only have three months to do the plan.
That's my understanding. Of course, you know, if they came out earlier, that'd be great, give us some more time.
Let's hope they do.
The CICS Employment Committee, we met recently and continued a discussion that's been going on for a little while regarding looking at regional employment and related issues to that. No decisions have been made. We're kind of, I would say we're in the seeking information phase right now. The discussion right now has been maybe through attrition, people could become regional employees, but there's a lot that would need to be worked out with that, a lot, and action would be required, of course, by the governing board and that as well. So it's conversation right now.
While it's still in the conversation stage, I'm just wondering about impact on Story County, and I'm thinking of you particularly, Carla, because you work for us and you are our department head for Community Services in addition to be, serving a role in CICS, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the other hat I wear is with our General Assistance Program, which is a county function. So yeah, those, those are things that we're talking about and how, how would that work? What would it look like, certainly? Yep. For Community Services, this quarter I had the opportunity to work with Margaret James and Dr. Passion on the Board of Health Chair to prepare a presentation. We did that on April 24th at the Iowa Governor's Conference on Public Health regarding our work with Crestview Mobile Home Park.
And I'm sorry I wasn't going, able to attend.
It's okay. I believe the presentation went very well. We had people come up to us afterwards and talk with us about it, and one individual indicated to us, she found it very interesting, very educational, with a sense of humor in it, too, at times, so.
Well, good.
So it, it went, it went well. I was glad to be able to work with them on that. We remain involved in several local committees, the Opelioi Task Force, Nevada Substance Use Task Force, and the Nevada Substance Use Task Force is holding an event tomorrow evening, starting at 6:30. It's at the Josephine Tote Performing Events, Performing Arts Event Center, and I believe they will also have an in-plane site trailer available where individuals can go in and tour, and you can, you get a sense of how things can be hidden in everyday household items such as drugs and that, how it can be hidden in things that everybody carries in their house, so I believe that will be available. We continue to work with local agencies regarding coordinated intake process for rent and utility assistance. We've got a meeting set up on May 22nd with the Iowa State Association of Counties. They're helping us look at a database option. We had been talking with them about potentially using the Community Services Network. They wanted to, they would probably need to do some revamping to that system, so we've had conversations about looking at, is there a current product that's out there that could be used for what we would need it for, and then interface with Community Services Network? So we've got a, a meeting coming up on May 22nd, and they've actually invited other regions to the meeting, other county general assistance programs to the meeting to see if, if there is interest statewide potentially. So I'm looking forward to that. We continue to participate in county trainings that are available, and then Erin Rehertz in her CBSO role had 103 interviews with veterans or surviving spouses this past quarter.
Thanks.
Any questions for me?
Thanks. Once again, a good report, really just said, hey, this is what we're doing and how much we're involved, your staff, it's incredible what, the different scenarios you guys might experience in given a day or two, so thank you.
Yeah, every day there's something new sometimes, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Carla. Okay, we are down to other reports, and Darren Moon is going to tell us about the gravel road conditions.
Hi, Darren.
Okay, well, I wanted to come and give you an update on gravel road conditions. I'm sure you've taken some complaint calls. We've taken literally in the hundreds of complaint calls. I think about half of them, first, I want to thank Bree Van Sickle. She's new to our office, and she's our first point of contact in the office, and she's become very good at answering these calls initially. She's able to handle most of them on her own now, which is great. She's been a huge help. About 50% of the people call, listen to her explanation of what's going on, the other half just care about getting their road fixed immediately, they don't care why. So she's done a great job dealing with that. I want to go back to this slide. I gave you a little quick class on frost boils and what they are, just a couple more things I didn't mention last time. One, this has pavement on the top. This is a good time to kind of remind the board, there's been comments out there, why don't you just seal coat these roads and do thin pavements? This is the reason we don't. The reason that water's kind of gets waked up from the bottom because of the soil type in Iowa in particular. We have great soils for farming, but building roads, it's not so good. So when it wakes that water up, it, it's going to destroy the top of the road, and if it's paved with a thin pavement and equipment goes over it while it's soft like they are out there right now, it would absolutely destroy those pavements, and then there's nothing you can really do with them at that point, it becomes a real nightmare. So that's when somebody comes in and requests a thin pavement, that this is why we don't do them. If you look at our gravel roads right now, if you put something thin over the top of that, it does no good. Couple pictures of what we're dealing with. What the public doesn't understand, and I understand why they think this, they think just go out and shave that off, that's higher than it looks. Pictures don't do justice. It's like two foot up in the air in the middle, and it's all unstable mud underneath that, so we try to keep that top crust on there as long as we possibly can. First of all, our, the roads took a couple weeks just to support our mortar graders. We couldn't even get on them for a while, so it looked like we were doing nothing, but we would have made them much worse by trying to even drive down them. But we don't shave that off because, one, if you shave that off, it's all unstable. The next rain you get is just going to sit in that hole, and it's, there's no bottom to it, so you just sink out of sight. And there's a couple pictures in here later of ones we did shave off. This is one, it's got a frost boil. I think it was two miles long, two foot raised in the middle, and it was nonstop. And some of that's due to, because we have hauling operations. I know farmers, they call in and they say, I've waited long enough, I've got to get feed. So I understand there's times when they can't do anything else but haul, but we've had some other haulway operations, like the Stover hauling out, stuff like that, that probably could have waited, but we don't have a lot of control over that, but it just destroys the roads. This is one where we did shave off the frost boil quite a long time ago, and it got to that point, it just became unpassable, and it had a lot of houses on it. We had to put the barricades and actually close it, but we had to keep it open to get people to their houses, but that's why we don't cut the tops off, because it will create a, an absolute mud hole that will have to close the road. There's no getting around it. This is 19th Street, south of Nevada. It gets so much traffic, we had to do something to it, so we tried to shave them off and put a bunch of rock in it, and the mud just continues to pump up through it, and like I say, the pictures don't do justice how rough that actually is. Just a close-up picture of a frost boil, you can actually see a slurry kind of pumping out of the middle of that. It just continues to pump out of that, and I've never, this is the worst I've seen in 25 years, but I've been doing counties near for 25 years and other counties as well, and it's, they cross the entire state, I've never seen it this bad, and they've lasted so long, too, they just won't go away. It continues to pump out, so it's just going to take time to let these things settle out. We're on the roads as much as we can and hauling rock as much as we can. Took a picture of, this is a private residence, their driveway is doing the same thing as our roads. It's everywhere. Did on the budget side of things a little bit, we have budgeted $825,000 for rock, that's materials only, but that does include some of the hauling when we contract haul. Martin Marietta do our rock, that includes a little bit of a hauling, but our internal hauling is not included in that 825, so the amount we spend on hauling rocks is probably, you know, one and a half times that when you include the hauling in there, so we spend well over a million dollars hauling a rock each year. We have, go ahead.
I'm going to let you, you may answer my question.
Yep, okay. We have spent already over $400,000 hauling rock, just materials, in this FY. Rock hauling with Martin Marietta has been put on hold because they would actually do more damage hauling that rock out there than what we'd gain, and I'll show you a map of where that will go eventually. Hopefully, next month, we'll get some down. I don't know if we'll get it all spent out of this fiscal year, so that's another reason why I'm not too concerned budget-wise. We're continuing to haul rock. Right now, we're about ready to our budget if you include the Martin Marietta hauling, so we're probably a little over budget right now hauling rock, but I don't think we're going to get all that $440 spent on Martin Marietta out of this fiscal year, so that will help budget-wise. It'll be next year when we'll have to sit down and talk about how much do we need to be spending on rock and adding to the budget. So just real quick on how our budget amendment works, you might not have heard this discussion before, but we have a DOT budget and a county budget for our roads. The DOT budget has four categories, administration, roadway maintenance, general maintenance, and construction. We can only exceed one of those categories by 10%. That's the maximum until you have to amend. So not only can you not exceed one of those by 10, but you have to make up for that 10% in one of the other categories, so you can't exceed your total budget at all.
So what it says up there can only exceed each category by 10%, but that's really one category.
You can exceed more than one, but 10% is the max, it can go over, as long as you make it up for it in another category.
Is your cumulative max. Okay, thank you.
You should not have to amend again this year because of a bunch of factors. The construction hasn't been started mainly because of the wet conditions, so we're not going to get the construction money spent that was already budgeted, so that'll carry over into next FY. So we've got the additional money there, so we won't have to amend again for rock, but I don't want people to think that's because we're stopped hauling rock. We're still hauling rock, but we'll be able to make it up for it in other areas. So that does mean we're spending money on rock that the board didn't approve in the budget for rock, so I want to make you aware of that, but I think you'll be agreeable to that, I would imagine.
Yes.
It won't take any official action, we'll just keep spending without an amendment. We can generally only spend like $100,000 to $150,000 a month hauling rock ourselves anyway, so if all of that Martin Marietta rock got hauled, we'd still be over by $100,000 to $200,000, and we'll be able to make up for that from other areas easily.
That's positive news. I was not being as, as optimistic.
Again, next year's when we're going to have to talk about beefing up our rock budget.
Okay.
The roads are just so misshapen now, we're going to have to get them back in shape and add rock, and it looks like a lot of roads out here don't even have rock, but all the rock that was there is getting pushed down because it's so soft, so the rock's still under there, it just looks muddy, but every time we get a rain, it just looks like muck out there, and that's why we're going to continue to get these rock, or complaints every time we get a rain event.
And every time I get a call, I say, you know, we're going to have to spend more money next year.
Yeah, I'll get to the money issue a little bit later here.
Good crap, Darren.
This is the rock hauling contract for Martin Marietta haul. It's just kind of east of I-35 all the way through the county. Like I say, we're holding off on this until the roads firm up enough where they won't destroy them. Other downside to holding off this rock contract is our dust control applications go down in about two to three weeks. So hauling rock after the dust control goes down is going to just create more complaints, but there's not much we can do about it. We're pushed, we already pushed off dust control one week, the roads just are too soft to even put dust control down on them, it wouldn't last long. We might have to look at maybe even another week of delaying that, but I think the rock haul's probably going to happen after the dust, dust control is down, and that's something we just have to deal with. Getting back to some of the more money, and when people complain about the funding for roads and how much we're putting down in rock, this rock hauling contract, we put down 250 tons per mile, so every mile blue line there, we put 250 tons. That is equal to about a half inch thick of rock on that entire mile. It's not much. If we did that for the entire 700 miles in the county, that would be about $3 million a year we'd spend just to get the half inch. So people, when they comment how if you just get two to four inches of rock on this road, they'd be fine, two inches of rock would cost $12 million to put down today, but four inches, you can double that up, so you can see what we're talking about. So we're, we're trying to get by with what we have available, I'm used to doing that, but this year, the weather conditions just didn't cooperate, and there's only so much we can do.
Darren, you mentioned Bree taking so many phone calls, and you're taking phone calls, I assume everyone else is, too. Would you, would you say, what, 10% of your time now is being spent just on answering those, or 20?
They tapered off some. We did put a press release out, and I saw it got a lot of hits on Twitter and Facebook. I think that reduced the call some, little understanding of what we're dealing with. So they have tapered off some, but they still come, especially after we get a rain event, they're going to come in again tomorrow, I'm sure. But I really couldn't put a percentage to it, and Bree's handling most of them, we make it up, she explains to them, we'll make up, work order, and get to them as soon as we can, and that's kind of comes to my next discussion on people's expectations, it's something we just can't meet right now. These are the mortar grader districts, we have 10. Each district has about 75 miles. When we blade roads, you have to go down and back, so multiply that by two, if you're talking the distance you have to travel. So that's 150 miles, a mortar grader has to go at five miles per hour. That's under ideal blading conditions.
Patience.
That's 30 hours just to get through their district. It normally takes them a week to two weeks just to get through their district once blading. With the conditions we have now, they're typically waiting for a rock truck to come, because every time they blade off a frost boil, they have to wait to get rock on it and smooth it out. They can't just leave it, otherwise the car will get stuck in it. So, I mean, we're only getting probably five to 10 miles a day right now, at the most.
You're talking all 10 districts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when people call and say, I just, just get out here and blade this off now and it'll be fine, it's like they don't understand what we're dealing with and to the level. Mike Evans down in the southwest corner, he was about due for retirement, but yesterday he had enough, announced, gave us two-week notice. I understand he's dealing with a lot of complaints, and he gets stopped on the road, too, and there's only so much he can do, and he's just reached his limit, and I think we have another mortar grader operator kind of here in today, he's kind of heading down that same road and getting extremely frustrated. They've done an excellent job these past three months, going straight from, you know, winter maintenance into this terrible spring thaw, and it's been a lot to deal with, and I can tell you they're doing everything they can and they care, so that's why it's so hard on them, because it's hard to get a lot of complaints when you're doing everything you possibly can to fix it.
Especially that it has, it's been so long since we've had the span of winter for road conditions, so.
What can we do? I mean, I know we're saying thank you to everybody tomorrow, hopefully they all come in and we can thank them individually, but is there something else that we can do, Darren?
I think just, when the public calls and complains to you, just explain to them it's just going to take time. Just because you don't see somebody get out there tomorrow doesn't mean we don't care and we're not doing everything we can. It's going to take time for it to settle out this year. It's the worst we've ever seen. It's statewide. It's the worst we've ever seen, it's statewide. Everybody's dealing with this and we're doing what we can. I think that's the most you can do right now. And then, like I said, next fiscal year, we're going to have to look at adding some more to rock just to get things back in shape.
Well, and, and you've given good information. It's helped me because I've been getting, you know, most of the calls that come here, which is like a tip of the iceberg, I know, but, but, you know, just knowing why we can't get the graders out now that we're going to make more trouble, you know, if we do. And you explaining to us what frost boils were, I, I've seen them my life, but I didn't know, you know, exactly how that worked. Just, just to be able to get information to people and explain to them that we're quite aware. And I know you've gone out a couple times when there's just, and done some things, but that you can't get out everywhere and solve everybody's problem and.
And my last couple slides up here are the last resort conversation with landowners that talk about how much taxes they pay. I'll get to that at the end. Let me hit, this is our current road closure map. Some of them got so bad, most of these are probably due to the hauling operations on them. We've actually had to close these roads. They just, or cars were getting stuck in them, so we had to close them. We tried to keep everybody with access to their homes, but two or three that dropped off the list today. Things are starting to dry up a little bit and they're able to get through some of these miles and get them back open, but we still have a handful on this road closure map. There's a picture, some of that are closed. It's hard to see in the picture behind it, but you can see the white rock on the road. We've tried to get it open and it's just, our mortar graders would sink out of sight and there's no way a car could get down them. And this one has a residence right in the middle of the frost boil bed and we put a lot of rock in there. It's hard to tell, but on the right side, that's two to three-foot-high dirt. We wind rolled over to the side just to get the muck off and just trying to keep it open for people to get access. So, I hate to say it, but if you can get to your house and if you have to go over on the side of the road to get there without bottoming out and you have access, I feel somewhat fortunate you can at least get to your house, because there's some that's extremely difficult to even get down. There was a couple roads we absolutely had to get something done with, they get so much traffic. This is Peterson Pitt Road, 180th. We had to court out. This is a long, major frost boil and the only thing you can do to get rid of that or try to help is court out. That's probably a little over two feet deep. It was over 100 foot long. And then we got to fill that all with rock, so it's very expensive, but we had to do it on this hill. Probably cost $10,000 to $15,000 to do that. And you could rock, you know, two, three miles with that rock, but, so we had to do that here to get this back open. And then this was on 270th South and Nevada, a lot of homes in this area. It just got to the point, I know Joe Quaker lives on this road, his son got stuck in the frost boil, tractor pulled him out and we had to do something just to get people to their homes. So, we had to court this one out. It was about the same size, fill it back with rock. So, we had to do it in these two spots, but this is another thing the public asks, why don't you just come out and dig it out? This took a day or two on each site and it cost $10,000 to $15,000. We just can't do that on 700 miles of roads. So, that's why you kind of just got to let them sit and take time to heal themselves. It's frustrating, but. So, last discussion on the tax. I don't ever bring this up first, but when somebody calls and just keeps harping on how much taxes they pay, this is what I pull out. This happens to be somebody that was a complainer and $250,000 rural acreage. You can see under Story County, out of their $3,200 tax bill, they send $947 to the county out of that. Out of that, FY 19, Story County took in 25 million in property tax revenue. Secondary roads receives 2.6 million out of that, about 10%. So, take that 10% times the 947 they sent to the county, you have $97 they paid towards roads. That won't pay for a quarter load of rock. Technically, they also pay fuel tax, so I just made the assumption they have two cars at 15,000 miles a year on those two cars. Average that all out, that comes to $450 and 30 of that comes to counties, cities, and state get the other thirds. So, that's another $150. So, in total, they pay about $247 to secondary roads per year and that is about the cost of a load of rock.
How many loads of rock did you have to put in that frost boil, let you dug out?
Oh, yeah, 20 or 30.
20 or 30?
Yeah.
You can't do that for one person?
No. That's where the finances just don't add up. We have a mile, a road every mile in Iowa for ag purposes and a lot of rural residents live out there and for the most part, the farmers understand, most of our complaint calls are from the acreage residents that don't farm.
Could I have a copy of that slide?
Yeah, I did. Just put it on there.
I will email a PDF to you on this.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. I bet that was a little therapeutic too.
Yeah, and I don't want to use it as an excuse, but it's reality. It's what we're dealing with for funding and we just can't go re-rock the entire county. We rock about a quarter of the county a year and that's about what we can afford. And this, we have other issues we have to deal at the same time, emergencies. This is one we just dealt with a week or two ago, sloughs off and we've got to get to these right away. This was from the flooding. But we're dealing with other things too besides the roads, but our focus is almost all on roads right now. We're pulling everybody we can to haul rock and we're not opening up any other jobs unless they're absolutely necessary. But that's, that's the condition of the roads and we're dealing with it the best we can. It's been a long three or four months, but.
I think we're very fortunate to have you, have your crews. You've got a lot of experience. You've got a lot of experience then on your crews. I'm sorry to hear about the recent resignation and maybe a good burrito breakfast tomorrow, a change of mind or two if they're thinking there, but this, this has to be so stressful on all of you. So, thank you for, for hanging in.
Doing a great job and they care, I can tell you that.
Well, we get reminders every day when we see the road closure notices you send out.
Yeah.
That it's, it's tough out there and you're doing, you're doing a great job. So, thank you and we'll see you and your staff tomorrow.
Yep, thank you.
I do have one question, I'm sorry. So, 220 that turns into Avenue T, just north, I tried to take the gravel a couple times and I just, you know, it's just so messed up. But I'm seeing those semis. They're coming out of Ames on Lincoln Way or they're coming out of Kiko up or whatever and they're taking, they're going up there 600th to 220 and they're tearing up that road terribly. Do we, is T part of Nevada now or?
There's a portion, T to the east of S-14 is city.
Okay.
And to the west.
To the east, but west is, because I'm telling you about, okay. So, I just, I know somebody's been out there because I've seen that, that there's blocking around a small, I think frost boil or whatever, but I just, I just see what's happening and I'm running into semis there. And I know you can't do anything about it.
We've got another hauling operation going on today on 282nd, south of Ames, and it's an important road, a lot of acreages on that one and they're just tearing it up. You can embargo roads for 90 days, but ag, anything ag is exempt from the embargo, so it doesn't, doesn't do much good to even embargo roads.
Thank you.
Darren, I need to get a signature from you.
Okay.
And then LeAnn, you're up next. Thanks very much. Okay, LeAnn Harder to talk about the Ames Economic Development Commission for Economic Development, playing contracts with them, excuse me, for economic development planning and workforce development services for FY 20.
This will be fast. I didn't receive any feedback from the board, so what you have on your agenda, we'll go to AEDC next for their review and then come back officially for you in the next couple weeks or so.
Okay.
Just housekeeping, really.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting around for that. Upcoming agenda items, I don't think I have anything to add or note, Dolores?
The R-Story contract or our discussion about what we're doing with R-Story will come within the next couple weeks. And I don't know when or if this will become an agenda item, especially if we decide not to spend any money, but just for information purposes, have started discussions on how we might archive photos. And LeAnn and Deb and I met on that and I think they've got great ideas and they're going to go research here and just figure out how we could ea, how people could easily find some general use, shared photos for publication or for a report or something, but without getting way down deep into the archive process. So, that's it, what I had on possibilities, except for what we've already discussed.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing to add. Public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. I don't see any, anybody from the public here. Anybody else have anything they want to, want to take 30 seconds on? Okay, then. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Dolores?
I just, I'll be gone all next week. It is the lobby trip to Washington DC, but I'm taking Monday to travel, so I get a little extra time. And then I'm taking Friday and Saturday, I have a niece that lives in DC. So, I'll see you guys then, that next, that Monday after the 20th.
And I'll be on that trip as well, so we'll have a claims-only agenda for next week. And Rick Sanders will chair the meeting from here and we'll contact somebody so we have a vote, so we can approve claims. And I think that will be it then, and then other agenda items should come the week after. Is there motion for adjournment?
I move.
Second, and we're adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.